Good evening. Welcome to the July 16, 2024 Voting Meeting of the Exeter Township School Board. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Feig, could you take roll call, please? Doctor, sorry. Jason Mill?
Here.
Julia Schaefer?
Here.
Deborah Bloom?
Here.
Dr. Andrea Battler?
Here.
John Fidler?
Here.
Dr. Ann Herring?
Present.
Timothy Morgan?
Present.
Travis Odom?
Here.
Allison Wilson?
Here.
All present. Thank you, Mr. Feig. In addition to the nine board members in attendance this evening, we are also joined at the board table by our solicitor Sharon Montaigne and members of the school district administration, including Dr. Kristi Haller, Superintendent, Mrs. Dawn Harris, Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Josh Hoyt, Director of Teaching and Learning, Mrs. Diane Skornavaki, Director of Human Resources, and Mr. Brian Feig, who serves as our Business Administrator and Board Secretary. First up on the agenda, we'll be recognizing multiple students from the junior high Envirothon team.
Hi, I'm Brechen Hess, teach seventh grade science at the junior high. I'm a regular here, I teach seventh and eighth grade science at the junior high. And we are the advisors for the Envirothon team. This year, we took four separate teams and-
I'm sorry, ladies, would you mind speaking into the microphone just for those of you on at home? Thank you.
The, this year, we took four seventh grade, yeah, four seventh, four Envirothon teams. They consisted of six seventh and eighth graders to the competition at Noldy Forest. And we brought home second place overall for the county. And the team that won second place, they also got first place. They have it in the categories, and in the category of soils, they won first place in soils. And they were, we speak for the trees, and they dressed up for, yeah, like the Lorax. They had their yellow furry mustaches, and we thought we would get the Spirit Award, but it didn't happen. But I don't know if there's any questions for us. We just wanted to thank, we thought we had invited some students, some RSVP'd, but obviously didn't make it. But we wanted to thank you for your support of the program.
Okay.
We also wanted to give a shout out for our new garden beds to our Eagle Scout, who, giving all new beds. Like, I know when I started here 17 years ago, my dad and I came and built them, so I know the amount of work that goes into that. And we wanted to give a shout out for our department-
Who was the, who was the Eagle Scout that did that?
Cody Morgan. Some of you might know him better than others. But yeah, we really appreciate it. They needed it, and they were wonderful for planting here in the spring.
I have a question. How does the Envirothon mesh with what you teach throughout the year?
Some of the content coincides, some does not. Now, with, I think, the, for the different environmental standards, sustainability and things like that, that functions in. But we have, the categories for Envirothon, it's forestry, they have to be able to identify different trees. They have the Biltmore sticks to figure out how many linear board foot they could get out of a tree. There's soils which they got first in, wildlife, and then aquatics. So some of it matches, but it goes into more detail than what would be in our regular content.
It's like an extension to what we teach in our seventh grade science curriculum, yeah.
And we always invite, because it includes sixth grade, even though we're at the junior high, since they'll let us include sixth graders, we always bring them up because then it helps, it makes the team stronger as, if they continue through it. So this year, the team, it had seventh and eighth graders on it that won. The team that won the second place had some new on it and then some repeat individuals. So it just, it helps our team out.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, well, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we will not be making any amendments to tonight's agenda. And next is Superintendent's Report with Dr. Haller.
Good evening, everyone. I'd just like to remind our community that we are in full swing of the projects being done by Quandale at each of our buildings. And as you drive by our buildings this summer, you'll see that there are signs out in front of many of them. If you're interested in seeing the progress of those projects, you can go on the district's homepage on the website, and there is a button that's click, that you can click on that says Capital Projects. And the projects are listed by building, so you can follow the progression of each of the projects as they're happening to get updates. I would also encourage parents to start to look for messages from the school district regarding the opening of school. We are a couple of weeks away, and we will be back into the full swing of things. And I just recently saw on social media that we're about 24 Fridays away from Christmas. So this is, this is, this is happening, this is definitely happening, folks. So, but I hope everyone else has a great rest of their summer.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Haller. Next, we'll move on to public comments, but no one has signed up, unless anyone from the audience would like to come up and speak. Okay. Next is Board Meeting Minutes. If there are no objections, we'll adopt a motion to approve meeting minutes from last month's board meetings, which includes the June 4, 2024 Committee of the Whole Meeting, as well as the June 12, 2024 Board Voting Meeting.
I, I have something.
Yes.
I was not at the June 4 Committee of the Whole Meeting, and my name is not correct, so it should just get fixed.
Okay. Could we make that approval pending corrections to the, to the minutes? Okay. Anything else? Okay, hearing no other objections, the minutes are approved pending the changes. Treasurers' Report and Payment Requests, if there are no objections, we'll adopt a motion to approve the June 2024 Treasurers' Report and Payment Request dated June 13, 2024 to July 12, 2024. Hearing no objections, the Treasurers' Report and Payment Requests are approved. And moving on to committees, we'll start off with Education with Dr. Battler.
Thank you, Mr. Mill. First up is a presentation, the overview of the Exeter Township High School TSI Plan for 24-25. It's attached. Does anybody have any questions regarding this?
So I can provide just a little context to the plan real quick. So this is a change from the Pennsylvania Department of Education. 2023 PDE required that any schools that were designated as TSI had to have their TSI board approved. The high school was designated TSI back in 2020-21, but it did not require a, a board approval at that time. So the TSI is a designation that the state of Pennsylvania gives school districts when they look at different criteria, whether it's academic, attendance, career, and they take a look at performing school districts across the entire Commonwealth. So based upon our subgroup of students with disabilities and their academic growth and achievement in ELA and mathematics, along with the threshold for attendance, we were designated for what's known as TSI for that. So TSI, you can be designated for any of the eligible subgroups that you have within a school, within your school district. So once we were announced that we were designated, myself and the high school team, administrative team got together. We formed a TSI Improvement Team. We met almost monthly to develop that plan. That plan has to be developed by very specific individuals that you're seeing in there. And it has to fall to make sure that you are meeting the requirements against what you were subjected to, in this case, which was ELA and math, growth and achievement, along with attendance. So just like I presented the comprehensive plan, it's a very similar process and concept to that. So that plan will then go into place for the 2024-2025 school year and is monitored based upon those goals and evidence-based strategies.
Dr. Hoyt, can you clarify, are we voting on this tonight? Or are we pushing this to a future agenda to actually vote on the final plan?
So this is just to provide the public with the, what the plan looks like as long with the board, and then it would then get approved at the August School Board Voting Meeting. So very similar to the comprehensive plan as well. It's a similar process, so it goes on a 30-day public review.
Okay, thank you.
What does TSI stand for?
TSI stands for Targeted School Improvement. So PDE can designate schools, you hear term CSI, which is Comprehensive School Improvement, ATSI, which is, is a little bit more stringent than TSI, and then TSI. So like I said, PDE back in 2023 put the umbrella that any type of designation required school board approval. CSI is for the lowest performing Title I schools. The high school is not a Title I school, so that's why it's designated as a TSI, not a CSI. So just PDE jargon there, but it means targeted school improvement.
Dr. Hoyt, it's a little confusing here, or rather, I'm confused anyway. The, on page five, there's a, an item, 32.8% of students were proficient or advanced on the Algebra I Keystone, which was below the state average. Now, is that all students, or is that just special needs and other different groups? That's what's confused me. Is it everybody or just certain groups?
So the first part of the plan is to collect as much data as you can. As you recall, when we did the presentation on our PSSA and Keystone data back in the spring, we had an asterisk next to our Keystone Algebra I data, because there were a number of students that received the COVID waiver for that. So there was a number, a large chunk of students that were not included in the achievement score. So that's why we had, that percentage is 32% based upon the students who were in Algebra I during that time. So there were a large number of students who didn't take the Keystone Algebra I exam, which is why we questioned to the state, you know, how can we be held accountable for a percentage if the majority of our students got a waiver to take that test? So that percentage is based upon the number of students who took that test.
Okay. And also on page five, the last item under Challenges, 3.6% of English learners met their growth goals as compared to the statewide average of 29%. On the face of it, that doesn't sound so good unless you understand the terminology, which I don't. What is an English learner?
So that would be for our ESL population, and if you have an N count of 20 students or more in your school, they then get noted as a subgroup. So that would be 3.6 of the number of ESL students that we have in that cohort, which is, is a small number, but it's just over the 20 which reports us, so.
Okay. So are you concerned about any of these? I know you explained the first one, that most of them didn't even take the test. Are we under any kind of order from the state to do something, or is this voluntary? Or can you say a word about that?
So what we are required to do is we are, because we were designated, it does require us to develop a plan, which is what you see in front of us. The second phase of that is to present the plan and then have it board approved. Following that, from there, it's the expectation that you put the plan into place, but we're not required to submit anything to the state as to how this plan, when, and such. But we're fully committed that we realize that we have a lot of room for improvement, and that's why we're looking at this as a great opportunity that, to fall under our cycle of improvement, to make improvements across the board.
Got it. You mentioned that the high school was designated TSI in 2021. How many times have, has the district been identified as a TSI school?
From what I looked historically in the portal, that other 2020-21 year was the only year, because these, these identifications were starting new as of 2000, I believe, 2018-19 was the first year the state developed this new comprehensive system of targeted school improvement, so.
Okay. And one, one final question. Even though there's no deadline imposed by the state, what, what is our own timeline for making sure these kids are, are learning?
So this plan would go into effect immediately, once upon board approved, approval, and those teams are in place to, we will have what are known as biweekly and monthly routines to check in on the progress as we get our CDT data that comes in, as well as taking a look at the attendance data, the behavior data, getting qualitative and quantitative information from our students and our teachers and such through that assessment data, and then seeing how we progress. There's a monitoring protocol that you follow where you, each quarter, you look at how are you progressing? You develop quarterly benchmarks based upon that end-year goal, which what you'll see in the plan there. So at the end of that first quarter, we, we come together as a team and say, how did we do towards that first quarter benchmark? Do we need to make some adjustments? Do we need to bring some other people to the table here to support these kids? To support the teachers, to support the curriculum instruction? It's, it's a truly ongoing, living, breathing document. It's not just, that's it? Let's, let's hope for the best. No, it's truly something where there's a lot of collaboration and conversations going on to make sure that we're, we're improving.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I have a question as well. Do you have any idea, because, I mean, the, the action plan, the goal is that 80% of the students with IEPs will not have missed 18 or more school days. How many of these students are involved in after-school clubs or activities, athletics? Do you have any of that data?
I don't have that data in front of me. That's certainly something we can try to gather. I will say the part that is a little frustrating about the attendance piece is that chronic absenteeism, if you're a student who is getting, you know, could be in a, an impatient hospital for a reason, you're designated as a student who's chronically absent, even though you're getting the support that you need, as well as the instruction and whatever else that's in a need there. So, but, you know, we are looking at all different ways that we can connect with these kids to, to figure out ways that are beyond the scope of the school day. But, long story short, to answer your question, I don't have that data in front of me, but that's certainly something we can try to get.
Okay. If there's no other questions, moving on to the enrollment report. If nobody has any questions regarding that, we'll move on to field trips.
I, I did-
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, just going back to the enrollment report.
Yes.
The one that was of interest to me was seeing the summer district estimated enrollment of 3784. So we, last year's enrollment, according to that sheet, ended, sorry, I just had it up and I closed it. I believe it was 3, 3905. Now, that's, the, the number that we're getting for the estimate is not including out-of-district placements. Is, is, is that correct? So the 3905 would really be minus the 35 students to bring it to 3870? Okay. So just to point there, we're looking like there is a, at least right now with that estimate, there looks to be a deficit of about 86 students compared to last year, at least from what this is. But obviously, this is still subject to change. I know administration had run some reports. The years prior to COVID, it actually showed that summer projections have ended, ended up increasing by a little amount, maybe 20 or 30. But just something that obviously we want to keep our eye on to see what, what that ends up being.
Yeah, we pulled enrollment for the past six years, what had been the estimated enrollment. So we had our, one of our PIMS data specialists pull from the July reports over the last six years, and then do a October 1 poll. And when you look, and I have these for the board if you'd like a copy. When you look at the comparison, you'll notice that they're, they're, they're not very off from each other. So last year, during the summer, we had about 3,903 students for the summer months. And then by October, when we came back to school and we were situated for a little bit, we had about 3,884 students. So it's, it's not that off. Right now, as it currently stands, we have about 3,781 students. Our kindergarten numbers are a little bit low. Even from the report that is on the board agenda, there's already been a change. So right now, we have Lorraine, which is tracking high, it's at 91. We have Jacksonwild, which is tracking low at 42. And Awatton Creek is tracking very low at 79. If anything, the Awatton numbers and Lorraine numbers at this point would be switched, but it's still July. So our class enrollment right now for this particular class is lower than what we expect. So we're keeping an eye, keeping an eye on that.
Is that because they're going to other institutions or facility, I don't know what you want to call them, other places?
Other schools.
Other schools.
We don't, we don't typically get that information, so you either register with us or we might not be aware where you register, but that certainly could be a possibility. And sometimes the, the population just kind of, it ebbs and flows. So the class that's going into fourth grade this year is a very, it's one of our larger classes, it's very high. I'm not sure why that is, but it's just across the board in all of our buildings, that's, that's a high class. So it's, it's hard to tell. I will say, being a resident here in Exeter, I've noticed that there is a number of homes for sale in my neighborhood that keep popping up, and I know that a number of them have been older couples that no longer have children in the school district. So there is a possibility that we could see some shifts in the population in certain buildings with couples moving out that no longer have children in the system, and there's children now moving into the system. So we did also look at the PDE projections. When we had KCBA's study done back in about 2016, they did, they pulled PDE's projections for us, and they have our projection, had the projections tracking down, that we would be going to about 3,500 over the next couple of years. We haven't seen that, we haven't seen that yet. So we've kind of been up, and then we've, we've been down. So, but we haven't been below about 3,700 at this, in recent years.
How far out do they?
And, yeah, and PD's projection, as Mrs. Harris reminded me, is 3,900 for this year, which is different than the projection they gave us back in 2016. That projection was, I think, about 3,500, give or take.
How far did they go out for projections? No reason why I ask.
22, 2032, 2033 school year, right now.
The reason why I was asking is, is 20, probably 26, 27, will we have a big influx of kindergartners come in?
Yes, that's, we suspect that's going to happen as well.
Okay.
So, but as Dawn said, according to the projections, that's not really what they're projecting. So if, it would be of interest to the board, we pulled three years of projections from PDE. We pulled from 2012, we pulled the one from the KCBA report, which is 2016, and then we pulled this current year one from 2023. And again, for the 23-24 school year, which we just completed, we ended the year at about 3,800 students, but their projection had us at 3,530 students. In their projection that they released on the 26, the 23-24 had us at 39, 3,968 students. So that was a little bit closer than where we ended up. But on these current projections, again, you'll see that they're having us track down. So by 2032, 2033, we'll be at approximately 3,600 students, 3,679 students. But again, that remains to be seen, because what we have from the previous projections from 2012 and again from 2016, they're, they are not necessarily hitting the mark. So I think you have to be really cautious with PDE, some of the PDE projections.
Can I add one thing? PD uses live birth rates, so that's births in your district, people move in, it doesn't count. You know, they just look at the birth rates.
Dr. Haller, what do you typically see in the summer? I mean, here it is, we're early, mid-July. Is there a, like a growth spurt toward the end of the summer as the school year approaches with kindergarten enrollment?
So having been a former elementary principal at Lorraine for a number of years, it was not unusual that over the summer, we would have, by August, we would have 20 to 30 enrollments that occurred. Lorraine, oftentimes, Lorraine and Jacksonwild often would get hit the hardest and the fastest at the, at the last minute. I'm not quite sure why that, that is. Oftentimes, some of our communities that have more rentals because of when leases are up, oftentimes that could potentially be a factor, you just, you just don't know with families, you know, moving in and, and, you know, wanting to get their child enrolled in school. So there's, again, a lot of, a lot of factors as to what could potentially impact this.
Okay. Moving on, it is reported that the following field trips within the 60-mile radius have been approved. And that's our elementary bus rides.
Could I just make a note to the board? It says August 15 for Awatton Creek, but all the buildings are happening on August 16. They're all on the same day.
Thank you very much. Moving on, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the following list of staff conferences. There are three listed below.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the following graduation requests per district policy 2,000, excuse me, 217. And I'm not going to read them all, because that would be crazy, but there are quite a few below.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion?
Just a question, if I may. Do we, again, I forget, from a year ago, do we typically see this many at this time of year? Is this, this unusual?
This is a high number of students graduating early this year. We, Mr. Campbell isn't here tonight, but among the administrators who were talking about it, we somewhat believe that this potentially might be a result of the reduction in the number of credits that we have now. You may recall, about two years ago, we reduced the number of credits that students were receiving, but these students were- But these students were already in high school, and so may have already started to gather up some of these, these credits. And they might just have a potential of graduating early. When students request to graduate early, they do need to complete paperwork. And they do include in that paperwork what their plans are for graduating early. In the past, we've had a number of students who have actually left high school and gone right to start taking classes in college to get a jumpstart in college, whether it's at a community college, or some of them are student athletes, and they have an opportunity to go to college and start early there and, and working with that team. We've seen that in the past as well. Some of the students are just, they're going to a trade school. And we have a number of students that are entering the workforce. So, all of the students that request an early graduation do also submit to that, to us, their post-graduation plans.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the senior high school, junior high school, Reifden School, and K through four elementary school handbooks, as listed below.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the purchase of Honors Earth Science Textbooks for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Are, are we supposed to, at what point do we leave the book in here for thirty days? Is it after the purchase or policy?
We haven't purchased anything yet. This is the, this is the one copy that's right here. So, then this goes on right here. And then if it is, it stays in, in the office there for thirty days. If it's approved, then we follow through with the order.
Okay, thank you.
So, I can pass it around for you then.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries.
Quick question, just because I didn't think about this before. But I guess it would be Dr. Hoyt. Since it has to sit in the thing for thirty days, is it not being, I mean, we approved it, so you order them?
I, I haven't ordered anything yet.
But I mean, you will order them, because we approved them even though they're sitting, it's sitting there for thirty days, correct?
Correct.
Okay. That kind of is confusing to me, because I thought that we were supposed to allow everybody to look at it for thirty days and then have a discussion about it, and people can talk about it, and then we order it. So, I guess that's where I'm a little bit confused. I'm sorry. Can we, does anybody else, is anybody else confused about that? I mean, the other one, the AP English, like, we saw it at the COW. I get that. We had two weeks, I read it, we read it, you know? And then we discussed it.
This was just, this was just with the COW and the board meeting being so close together. By not approving it, it delays ordering it. So, that would take us till the end of August, which we would not have them in time for the start of the year. So, it, which is, the timing of it was, was unfortunate with it.
And I do understand that. But I guess now that I am circling kind of back to the other book as well as this one, did we have this for a month in the, like, do we ever mention at a, either a meeting or online that we have these for anybody to look at for a month before we decide to? I personally read this. I'm just saying. I took it home. He was, you know, Dr. Hoyt was very nice, let me read through it and everything. But if we're supposed to have it for the public, then why are we not doing that? Or is that not a policy?
I was going to say, which policy are you referring to? What number?
I don't recall. But I thought that it was a policy that we had to wait for thirty days.
I'm looking at the adoption of textbooks policy, which is Policy one oh eight. It, which sounds like that's the applicable policy, unless you're thinking of something else that I'm not aware of. And there's nothing in there about a thirty-day viewing window.
So, was it just then some, a practice that we had?
It may have been. I haven't been here long enough probably to speak to that. And since I'm not doing the textbook thing, I'll leave that for someone else.
I don't really remember textbooks. I mean, I know that they're always available for people to come in and see if they'd want to. But we did like the comprehensive plan. There were things like that that had to sit for so many days.
Yeah. I, I keep a, I keep a copy of every text that we have within here. And there are people sometimes who come in to take it out. So, they're, they're always available for people to take a look at, so.
Thanks for clarifying that.
And is that also true for like library books?
I, I don't have an extra copy of the library books, but.
No, no, just like a list?
Oh, yeah, the libraries have a list of the books that they have in there.
No, that they're ordering for the new school year?
That does go through, the, the way that that happens or goes through is that it first goes through a committee, then it goes to the building principal, then it comes to me, then it goes to Dr. Haller for it to, to be on the docket, to be approved.
I've never, you mean for us to approve, or just for Dr. Haller and the?
You, you approve, so that's a line item within the budget. Each building has a line item for the librarians to order their books. So, you approve the budget, which is where the line items are to purchase the books. And then the purchase is part of the bills that essentially that, that you pay.
Understood. Thank you very much. Okay, sorry, do you want to pass this around in case anybody else would like to look at it?
Sorry. I think we're on, if I recall correctly, we're on the letter H of the agenda to, so that's for the social studies resources extension purchase?
Did we approve, we already, we? Wait, what?
We approved the book.
We did? We said aye?
Yes, we said aye.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Yeah, for the Earth Science.
That's what I'm saying. I didn't know if we said aye. Forgive me, forgive me, okay. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the purchase of a two-year extension of the current Grade Five and Grade Six Social Studies textbooks.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves an addendum between the VLN Partners LLP and the Exeter Township School District regarding pricing updates to login seats for senior high school students.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve a tuition agreement between the Vista School and the Exeter Township School District for special education services for students nine-two-four, two-four-two-five, and nine-two-five, two-four-two-five for the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year at the annual tuition rate of seventy-seven thousand dollars per student.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves an agreement between Avianna Healthcare and Exeter Township School District to provide healthcare services to the students on behalf of the school in accordance with the terms and conditions set forth in the agreement for the period July first, two thousand twenty-four, through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, at a cost as per the attached schedule.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve an agreement between General Healthcare Resources and the Exeter Township School District to provide healthcare services to the students on behalf of the school in accordance with the terms and conditions set forth in the agreement for the period of July first, two thousand twenty-four, through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, at a cost per the attached schedule.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves a settlement agreement and release between the parents individually on their own behalf and on behalf of their minor, minor child, student two, nine-two-six, two-four-two-four, two-five. As proposed and further authorizes the Board President and Board Secretary to execute the settlement agreement and release on behalf of the district.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries.
And that's the end of my committee.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Battler. Moving on to personnel with Mrs. Wilson.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following resignations, certificated staff, support staff, and extracurricular staff.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following appointments. Certificated staff, support staff, and extracurricular staff.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries.
God bless you.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following requests for change of status. Number one, under support staff.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following additional assignments for support staff and substitute support staff.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following leaves of absences for six employees.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves, approves the following staff summer work. Number one.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the attached list of course requests.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the attached updated job description for the K through six curriculum supervisor.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the attached updated job description for the seven through twelve curriculum supervisor.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. Yeah, go ahead.
I'd just like to make sure that the community knows that this is just a change in the job description of two current employees, that the district is not adding any positions. But we believe that with the structure of our Department of Teaching and Learning, that going to a six, a kindergarten through six supervisor, and then seven through twelve supervisor would provide the best support for our teaching staff. And that's why that decision was made. But these are not two new positions.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve MOA between the Exeter Township School District and Dr. Christy Haller to amend her current employment contract to clarify longevity language.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries.
That's everything.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Wilson. We have Finance and Audit Committee with Mr. Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Mel. It is recommended the Board of School Directors approve a service agreement with Zito Business to provide voice telephony over Internet Protocol V O I P services for a thirty-six-month period at a cost of seven seventy and twenty-five cents per month. Their current agreement with Zito expires on July thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion?
I just had a couple of questions. Do you know what the increase is from our last contract?
Uh, let Joe Waik can answer that for me.
Zero.
Zero.
And I'm always curious when I see a three-year contract, is that, we, we confident that that's what we want to do again, that we don't want to look at a yearly contract?
I will ask Joe Waik, because I refer to the professional on IP stuff.
There was no, no increase. When we did look at other vendors, there was a substantial difference between Zito and the competitors. So, signing in a three-year agreement just helps us sort of keep thing, keeps things consistent. And we don't have to pay the upstart cost. So, if we were to do a year-to-year, and we were to change a vendor, there would be additional fees for migration and implementation. So, three years typically what we would do for telephony projects.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries.
Mr. Mel, that ends my lengthy agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Mr. Fidler, Facilities and Transportation.
Thank you, Mr. Mel. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the Johnson Controls Fire Protection Plan Service Agreement.
Second.
Thank you. I was hoping someone would second that. All right, we have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Just, just a question, I guess for Mr. Fike. This is a renewal, correct? This is not a new?
This is a renewal, correct.
Thank you.
It also includes inspection, which is mandatory.
Got it.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries.
And as Mr. Morgan said, that concludes my lengthy committee report.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Fidler. Dr. Hearing Policy.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the following policies. First reading, policy number eight hundred, policy number eight fifteen, policy number eight fifteen point one, policy number eight sixteen, policy number eight thirty, and policy number eight thirty point one, as well as second reading, policy number three-two-three, and policy number three-five-one. Mrs. Harris.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Mr. Mel, if I may?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mrs. Harris, please take it away.
Thank you. So, just wanted to make a couple of comments about these policies. If you notice, there's a commonality in that they all focus on records, technology, and in general, social media and data governance as well. And we worked on this batch of policies as a team of stakeholders. We generally do that for all policies, but this batch in particular required a larger group of us to sit down. So, there were members from Teaching and Learning, Christy, myself, members from the Technology Department. Mr. Fike sat in on this team. Mr. Seidel, our Safety and Security Director, also sat in on this team to review this particular batch of policies, because it kind of overlaps all of, they overlap all of those areas. So, I just wanted to give you a brief sort of summary of what the updates are to each of the policies. And a couple of these policies are new, and are policies that some of you have brought up before and asked some questions about before. So, I'll kind of give you a brief update on all of them, and then open it up if there are any questions for the team. So, Policy eight hundred is pretty straightforward. There's some update, it was updated to incorporate general references to security measures. Policy eight fifteen, the acceptable use policy. There are a lot of updates to definitions in that policy, as well as a new section on accessibility that relates to Policy eight sixteen, which is a new policy. Policy eight fifteen point one is our new policy on the use of generative AI in education. This policy, policy is a broad strokes policy, so it's not granular in nature. It's really a broad strokes sort of philosophy of the use of generative AI within the school district. It contains some general guidelines for AI literacy for staff and students. It contains some general ethical considerations that the district needs to consider around AI, some general outlines for evaluation and monitoring, and of course, some general guidelines for consequences for inappropriate use, which are very similar to the consequences for inappropriate use related to academic dishonesty. Then Policy eight sixteen is also a new policy. I think I forgot to mention Jen Breton was a part of this team too. She was very helpful with. She was very helpful with this one. This addresses our guidelines and considerations for how the district maintains social media accounts, and identifies the differences between the use of district-owned accounts and the use of personal social media accounts maintained by individual staff, school directors, and students. Policy eight thirty addresses the security of computerized personal information and breach notification. This policy more clearly defines the definition of personal information, and also has some updates related to Act fifty-one, which expands the methods of notice that we utilize to notify people if there's been a breach of information. And then policy eight thirty point one, data governance, storage, and security, is also a new policy. Again, broad strokes, and provides general guidelines regarding security measures to protect the integrity of our data, the responsibilities of service providers that are retained by us to protect our data, and consequences for violations of the policy. So with that said, I'll open it up for any questions that the team can answer.
I have a question. First, a statement. On page four of six of the eight fifteen point one, others crossed off, and Director of Teaching and Learning was added, but it's not checked. And then I didn't know if it should be checked, or if... Okay. My other question then, it said that students and staff may only use district authorized generative AI tools and resources. Is there a list that has been started as to what those tools and resources are?
I'll let Dr. Hoyt take that.
Right, so right now, we're working with the IU in terms of that list right now. Any type of software that teachers want to use have to go through the vetting process for our tech department first, to make sure that they are in compliance with SIPA and FERPA and everything. But we do have ChatGPT that's being used right now, that's the predominant one. But we are right now in the process of developing that list, and then going to make sure that teachers are aware of that.
Okay, that's what I was going to say too, because then it also said that you're going to offer PDE for staff. Is that going to be something that would happen, like, at the start of the school year this year?
That's correct. We've actually already started doing a little bit. Some staff have asked about it, and we provided them with the guidelines. The main part of it is to make sure that people are in compliance of the acceptable use policy. That's the number one proponent of it. But we do provide, we provided some on-the-spot training for it with how it's used, with the most important piece being not to be entering any type of identical information, anything like that within any of those products. And that's true of pretty much every product that we use right now. But absolutely, that's something that my team and I will be working in to make sure that staff are in compliance with that, as well as how to handle it as it comes up. Because there's ones that we know that kids are using right now on their own, that are through their, you know, their phone apps, things like Photomath, Mathaway, things like that, so that they understand just what those things do, and then how to ask the right types of questions within the classroom to bypass some of those things.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Fidler.
Thank you. You said, Dawn, that this is the, a new policy. Is this the first policy on AI?
Yes, it's our first.
Okay. And I mentioned some months ago that Mike Stoffer, the Executive Director at the Berks Career and Technology Center, was making available Mike Stein, who is spearheading the AI at BCTC. He was making him available as a resource to any of the sixteen sending districts. I'm just curious to know if we took Mr. Stoffer, Dr. Stoffer up on that, and has Mike Stein been here to work with us?
He hasn't been here directly, but that types of feedback, we have a consortium, and we have an AI consortium group through the Berks County Intermediate Unit, that that information gets passed through along with their pool council there, Mark Waltz. And that's the group that we've been working with to make sure that we're all on the same page with things, and how to best use these from an ethical perspective, from an instructional perspective, and from an academic integrity perspective. So a lot of districts are sharing information. This has probably been one of the biggest things that districts are looking at right now, because one of the things with regards to the policy that a lot of people are really having discussions with is not to be too granular and too specific about it, because it just keeps changing. You know, the policy that we create right now, two weeks from now, we would then have to possibly change it if we're too very granular about it. So we're all trying to approach from the same lens, where we're using a lot of the same language, a lot of the same strategies, with the really most important part, that there's an educational component of it, an ethical component, and how to support individuals to make sure that they're in compliance with it.
Great, thank you. Who's going to be our AI czar?
So it's, right now, Dan Wilcek is our Instructional Technology Specialist. He's the one who is our, person who's our representative for the AI Consortium Group through Berks County right now. But myself, Mr. Way, Sheldon, all of us, the Office of Teaching and Learning, and Information Technology are working collaboratively, myself with Dr. Elcaro and Mrs. Bush together, so to make sure that we're all on board. So it's more of a team approach. But Joe Way and myself are, if you want to talk about the guys in the hatch, like on Lost, who are entering the codes, that's kind of what we are right now. But, you know, we're supporting and aware of everything that's going on.
Good. Well, to mix metaphors, just as long as nobody says, Houston, we have a problem.
That's correct.
Okay. I've been, I've heard it said that a little knowledge can be dangerous, and that's probably where I am right now. I read a recent article in Education Week about North Carolina's statewide guidance. And I can't seem to find where Pennsylvania is. I do know that there are seven states, California, North Carolina, Oregon, Ohio, Virginia, Washington, and West Virginia. Pennsylvania seems to be in that gray area that's developing. Is that your understanding, that we don't actually have guidance from the state, but it's in progress?
I would say, A, it's in progress, and B, my experience, having worked at the IU and being a conduit of PDE, a lot of what they say is that you'll see a lot of, it's up to the LEA. So I know, we work a lot with PSBA. I know Mrs. Harris has gotten some language from them. We've looked, we looked at other states and school districts' policies, and we really spent hours really diving into this to try and figure out, what did we want to do with this moving forward, so that we can get ahead of it, as well as just support it, because it is, it's a hot topic in education right now, and it's an important topic in education right now. So I know PA is working on it, but with a lot of these things, they do give a lot of LEA discretion on that.
Sort of like with COVID.
Exactly.
Exactly. Very similar, very similar to that. But it's something that we're taking very seriously, and this is why we're approaching it from this first starting point here, just so we can move things forward.
It is an optional policy right now, Mr. Fidler, which means that districts don't currently have to adopt one on AI. Sometimes the policies that we bring to you are policies that are mandated because of some particular regulation or, you know, legislation that's been passed. But we felt as a team that we just wanted to get started on this and establish a starting point for our thoughts and our views on generative AI, and then we're going to work from there.
I'm just curious, did any of you read the article in Education Week about the North Carolina standards?
I'm aware of it. I have not gotten a chance to read it.
It does get, as you said, granular, and I know that's where we're getting to. We don't want to be there yet, but I found it very informative. One more question, if I may. There was a, Rand did a study of two thousand and ten, I believe, teachers across the country. And sixty percent of the teachers surveyed have either tried it and set it aside, or never heard of it. Where would you say our teachers are?
I would think that they're using it without realizing they're using it. I mean, if you've typed an email right now, and it's auto-corrected your grammar for you, that's AI.
Sure.
You know, if it's trying to finish your sentences right now, that's AI. We are a Google Workspace for Education school district, so we use things like Google Docs, Google Sheets. Those things have been embedded in it for a long time, so they have been, Schoology has it. So a lot of the products that we use are building it into a certain scale that allows the district to turn on or off certain features. So I think that it's one of these things where it's just become a significant buzzword right now. And ChatGPT and Google Gemini, and a lot of these other big, big-picture ones that have come out are the ones that I think some are not really familiar with. But with some of the smaller ones, a lot have been using it thus far. You know, we've had teachers who have asked to have it turned on. We've had others who have had, asked, can you please disable it? So I think we're kind of, you know, I hate to give you a gray answer, but that's kind of where we are right now across the spectrum, so.
Good enough. Good. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, I did have something myself that I wanted to talk about, which was under policy eight sixteen for the district's social media. There, and I believe these are the recommendations that are coming from PSBA when we get these policies. But the one specifically that I have some questions on is the one that's checked off. It says, "The Board establishes district-owned social media accounts as a non-public forum and directs school staff to disable functions, allowing public users to comment or post information on district-owned social media accounts." So I think my question's maybe more directed towards the solicitor in terms of what challenges could we face by doing something like that? I know we've seen the Supreme Court have that recent ruling not allowing public officials. I don't know if that's spread over to actual public entities or government entities.
There's no difference between a public official and a public entity. So the same risks that you take, or limitations in terms of not being allowed to censor content that you don't appreciate if you have an open public forum and you're a government entity.
So if we, if it's closed from the start, that doesn't fall under that?
That's correct.
That guidance, okay.
Right, right.
Okay. There also is legislation, at least a cosponsorship memo that went out on July second by Representative Marla Brown, who is also looking for cosponsors to put a bill together that would, and I'll just quote from the last paragraph of the memo, "Without clear legal boundaries, government entities and social media platforms may seek to exploit their authority to silence dissent, control narratives, and suppress political opposition under the guise of maintaining order and protecting the public. Please join me in cosponsoring this important bill to prevent the censorship of our constituents and promote a marketplace of ideas." So my only contention with this is, I don't know if, and you're saying we're not going to run any legal issues by doing this, but I also have a question of, if we try to block comments on social media platforms, such as, I don't know how we would do that on some like X or Twitter, because I don't think that ability exists. At least, I don't go on there that often, so I don't know. But what, I don't know how we can limit it all the same, or close down discussions all the same, I guess.
Well, I get, I mean, it depends if it's an, if it's an X.
Formerly Twitter.
Yeah, formerly Twitter.
Yes.
If it is run by the school district, the rules are all the same. You can't censor, you know, comments and posts that you don't like. If you open up that door and you choose to be on those platforms, then, you know, everything is fair game. If you, now, if you are, again, if you're on X as an individual person, and you make it very clear that this is an individual person, you're not speaking as a board member, say whatever you want, block whoever you want, you know, like whoever you want. If you are acting as a board member, and actually, all of you, except perhaps the board president, really can't act as the board individually, but it can look like you are, and that's where you run into problems. And then if you start censoring other comments that you don't like, or taking them down, or you're taking them off, that's when you're going to run into a lawsuit. Now whether, you know, who wins that lawsuit is a different question, but you will definitely run into that lawsuit. With regard to that, I haven't read that particular proposed bill, but free speech is a federal right. So even if the state says, you know, we're going to make sure nobody can block anything, because we think that's appropriate.
Sure.
I guess that's consistent with most federal law, but that's where it would be challenged.
Right, and there's no specifics really in this memo that states what exactly would be in that proposed legislation if she gets cosponsors. But that is something that, you know, could potentially come down the, you know, the pike to us on this. But I mean, on the other hand, you know, I do know that the district's social media is really a platform for posting information to families in the community. And, you know, I think it's, it potentially could be a slippery slope, but, you know, I kind of defer to administration on the challenges that you see there having to moderate comments versus just shutting it down entirely.
Yeah, so well, Mrs. Breton's going to come up to the microphone to talk a little bit, but just to that point a little bit, Mr. Mel, we definitely do not use social media as a way to have a back-and-forth conversation with community members. We would much prefer that they use other methods to communicate with us if they have an issue or concern, so that we can discuss it with them, either via email, or setting up an appointment, or making a phone call. And really, the sort of impetus for turning off those comments and making it a non-public forum is really also a matter of security. As you see, I'm sure if you're on social media in your personal life, there's a lot of bad characters out there who are putting spam and bad links and links that lead to viruses into the comments sections of social media posts. And so this is as much about that as it is anything else. And again, we want our families to talk to us directly if they have a concern, so we don't ever want them to think that that social media platform is a place where we want them to go to try to talk to us about things.
Right, yeah, because it's not, it's not really actively monitored for that purpose.
It's not.
Right.
It's not. It's really there for the purpose of us being able to disseminate information and share news and updates about the district.
Okay.
Just to be clear, though, we do have, the function capability is up where anyone can comment on that page, and they can share that to other sites. So while we may not engage in discussion, community member to community member can engage in a discussion argument. So I think, and I don't want to speak for Mr. Mel, but I mean, there is the potential for it to go sideways. I mean, there's that potential. I'm not saying there's anything wrong with how it's set up now, but that's, that is, to what Sharon said, that's the risk that you take by having your comments open.
Well, and that's true. But, you know, what's also true in a world where people take to social media is that we could put out a Parents Wear message that's close to our parents, and someone could cut and paste that and post that on a social media page to spark a debate or conversation about that as well. And we would, in essence, have no control over that. And I think we've all have seen where people post things on social media for one reason or another, and community members are weighing in, and unfortunately, oftentimes giving people incorrect information or just bad information, where we would prefer that they come to us and we can actually help them get to the right person, or get the right and correct information. So I understand the legal challenges of it, but we, like we said, we just don't have time to monitor all these social media posts and the comments and be able to respond back to them. And the guidance that we've gotten is that it is in the best interest of the district to just, to turn the comments off. But Jen can certainly speak to other social media, like Twitter and things like that.
So are you saying that after we approve this, then we're going to start turning them off?
It would have to be after the second reading is approved, I believe, right? This is only the first reading? Yep, okay.
If you have any comments or questions specifically, let me know. But as of right now, all of our comments are open. I do moderate them. We do actually have some tools that automatically hide certain comments, meaning that they are still visible to the people who wrote those comments, and that's perfectly legal. There's a set of guidelines that we've established, such as if you're trying to sell something, or putting up spam, or something like that, that we would hide the comment. However, we're, you know, it's not, it's not something where we're dealing with a massive amount of comments that I spend all day doing that, if that makes sense.
Jen, do we use any other platform other than Facebook?
Yes. We do have a Twitter account, however, X, sorry. We don't really use that very frequently any longer, for a variety of reasons. One of the reasons is that X has really opened up a lot of their rules in terms of allowing undesirable information to show up on that platform that we don't think is necessarily student-friendly. We use Instagram, that is something that... We use Instagram. That is something that I started, when I started at the, at the district, I, I created an account for that. We do a little dabbling in TikTok. And those, and I do use LinkedIn. We, I created a LinkedIn account for the district.
Can you close comments off for Instagram?
I, I believe so. I ha, I have to go in and, and take a look.
Yeah, that, and, and that would be, I, I think, a good follow-through with administration is prior to the second reading is maybe just confirming that any of the social media platforms that we're actually using can, can have the comments blocked off before we approve this, you know, the, the second reading.
And what are we, what are we doing too, like with clubs and activities that, like, might have, and like, you know, extra volleyball or something like that? What, like, what rules do they, do they have to follow our rules, like these rules then? I mean, it's a school fun, school clubs, I mean, school activities, school athletic, but run by parents or?
Yeah, it's, it's, the answer is it, it kind of depends. Lawyers always say that, right? No, because if it, if it is run by the students, then they have their, the students' speech rights, which are actually sometimes greater than the adults. If it's run by, like, it's monitored or there's a club, a parent club or something, we, you don't have any control over that, and nor should you. And if it is a school-sponsored club where there's an advisor and the school is sort of running the club, then these rules would apply to that.
So Allison, to, to kind of differentiate, like a booster or an APT, we have no control. But for something like EMA or Student Council at the high school, those are two places that I know that we have social media accounts that I don't deal with. Those would fall under these rules. And this policy goes beyond just the comments. It's also about accessibility and, and other things that have recently popped up with federal guidelines that really do make, you know, the, what you're putting out as far as content, like you have to be much more careful about what kind of content you're putting out there so that it does meet these federal laws.
Yeah, and no offense, Sharon, but I, I've actually heard a few stories of some lawyers that are purposely looking out there to find violations of those guidelines in order to get, get some easy money too, so.
I can't believe that, but I do. I, I do, I do know that what you're, the, some of the guidelines you're talking about is that they have to be handicap accessible. And so if you have a student club using some kind of social platform that is actually a school student club, that has to meet those guidelines of being accessible as well. So the different formats that you might have to utilize or make available.
Yeah, and those are the things that could be a little bit tricky in terms of making sure that students are always in compliance. And, and also some of our staff members who are running those things to make sure that they're always in compliance with the latest and greatest in the law.
Any other discussions or questions for Mrs. Breton? Okay, thank you. All right, I think we're ready to vote on these policies, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries.
That's everything.
All right, thank you, Dr. Herring. Athletics and extracurricular activities, Mr. Odom.
Thank you, Mr. Mel. First one I think I've ever done, so we'll give it a go. It is recommended by the, the Board of School Directors approve a sports medicine agreement with Commonwealth Orthopedic Associates for the 2024, '25, '25, '26, and '26, '27 school years at a cost of $30,000 plus $1,800 for physician services per school year.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead, Mr. Odom.
Are you laughing at me because I'm?
I guess.
So I, I've got several parts to question. My, my first question is, is, I tried to do a little research before we came in, but Mr. Feig, my first question to you is, if a child is injured, or a student athlete is injured during a sporting event, how is that covered by the school?
Every year, in fact, last month, you approved the sports accidents policy. They are covered under that policy. With municipal toward or liability, we're basically responsible for deductibles or if they do not have insurance.
Does that, does that have anything to do with this?
And it, it's actually not just sports. It is a gym class, doesn't cover playgrounds or anything outside. It has to be a school-sponsored activity. And, and a school, what would you call it? We have someone watching over activity, like a gym teacher or, or a sports team.
My question is, but that does not have anything to do with this agreement with Commonwealth?
Correct. This, this is basically the first line of help for the, the students. If they twist their ankle, if they cut themselves, it's, it's, you know.
I just wanted to distinguish between the two. That's the reason why I asked the question. I want to make sure that there was a separate policy based off of this.
Through the trainer to making sure that, you know.
Right, first aid, all those other kind of things. Correct. No, no, I, I, I read the contract. I understand that.
Travis, I'm sorry, just an add-on to that, just to be clear, that's, that's reimbursable. That's not, the school district does not provide the funds to the student and family upfront.
No, it's reimbursable. It's covered costs, it's not covered.
Thank you.
Correct.
So the only.
And they have to put a form in and the trainers know about it, and it's also on a website for the sports accident.
So I, I, I understand, the, the contract basically for the $30,000 is for the athletic trainer, which, which I, which is on staff. The $1,800 is for physicals. The only thing that I have questions or concerns about is in the endendum A of the contract in section six, ancillary services. A staff of fellowship-trained, board-certified sports medicine physicians and orthopedic surgeons. So is this stating, I mean, is, is that part of the contract? That they're supposed to do anything when it comes to the orthopedic side of it? Or they, or they supposed to be the first people, the Commonwealth is supposed to be where?
The person that's going to say you need, they're referring to someone else. Now with the insurance company, it really depends on the person's insurance because if they refer to Dr. X and it's not under the person's insurance company, they should go to their insurance company first because we're going to pay whatever their insurance company doesn't pay. And if their insurance company doesn't accept that, the other doctor, they should have, they should go to their first, to their insurance company first.
Okay, that's the reason why I asked.
For referrals.
That's the reason why I asked the original question.
Orthopedics say, hey, you should go see an orthopedic, but they could go to their insurance company to find out what orthopedic.
Right. So that was the reason why I asked the very first question because I wanted to make sure I understood the, the first policy. So what we do is we essentially are a supplemental insurance company to pay the deductible once there happens. But if they go to any doctor of their choice, we refer them to orthopedic.
Well, now we refer them to their insurance company to see what doctors their insurance company will pay for, right?
Let's just say that we need to reword things of how that, that gets discussed with student athletes. How, who gets referred to first, because that's not how it works. Like, I, I, I mean, I, that, it's, it's always been you go to ortho, common, ortho, Commonwealth Orthopedic Associates.
What they, what they probably need to say is, does your insurance come to accept Commonwealth orthopedics?
Correct. I'm, I'm just, I am saying that is something that I think that should.
I, I think it, I think it depends. Being a parent of two former student athletes who were in the trainer's office quite frequently, oftentimes when I would get that call, because we do have an athletic trainer on staff, it's Audrey Dickman. Audrey would call me and say, "Christy, I just want to let you know Riley Jacob hasn't, have an injury. I really think that you're going to need to have this followed up on." During my time as a parent, I was never specifically take them to Commonwealth. Now, if I chose to take them to Commonwealth, it's probably because I, it was out of convenience because it's literally in Exeter. But as a parent, I was never directly stated to me, go take them to Commonwealth.
That's, let me rephrase my comment then. It is inferred. That is where that probably should be taken. So that, I just think, my only, my comment, I get, I understand. We have an athletic trainer. That is from Commonwealth Orthopedic. It's the easiest way to do it. I also understand that it's for the, the simplicity of being in Exeter Township. I just think it needs to be reworded of you need to check with your insurance first. That's my only piece of the puzzle that I think.
So, but we, we actually have an athletic trainer in our CBA. We have a full-time athletic trainer. This athletic trainer is supplemental because we have so many student athletes in the junior high and high school, but.
And that's Audrey, correct?
That's Audrey.
Okay.
But ultimately, this is no different than one of our nurses saying, you, you need to go to the doctor. You know, do you go to Reading Pete's? Do you go to urgent care? It might be inferred, but ultimately it's up to the parent to have an understanding of their insurance and who they can and cannot go to.
True.
Does that?
No, I, I, I under, I understand.
And, and I'm sure some of the kids would prefer to see Commonwealth because of, you know, honestly, of Dr. Marr. Dr. Marr is on the sidelines with especially our football team during football season. The kids see him. He is the physician on site, and so there is a level of comfort. But we do have a athletic trainer that is part of our contract. This is just supplemental.
I also, I don't see it in the contract, but I was under the understanding, and maybe I'm incorrect. But I thought that part of this was that, and maybe this is where the inference comes in, that if you need to see a orthopedic physician, that if it is related to an injury that happened within the district, that there are, that Commonwealth was obligated to see you within a 24-hour timeframe? Or maybe that was another inferred?
I, I.
It's not in the contract.
It's not in the contract.
But that was always my understanding.
Absolutely.
And that, and that might be something that, again, people infer, people can infer.
And that was always, and that's a benefit, right? Because you may not be able to see in 24 hours a, a physician.
That, that's always what, yeah, that we've told and said and those kind of things, so yeah. I, I, I don't, I don't have a problem with the contract. I think it's the, the comment, the, the, the language and how we need to, the language, the inference. If it's not going to be in the, the contract, then let's not have the inference, the, is that the right word? Am I using the wrong, I'm using it, I'm butchering words here. Longevity, yes, thank you.
I don't know that we can speak to inferences because no one really knows where they're coming from. You know, it's kind of like whispered down the lane. Like I said, you can, as a, as a parent myself, I can only speak to my experience and that, that wasn't my experience. So, and I was never promised to be seen by someone at Commonwealth within 24 hours. As a matter of fact, that, that didn't happen. So I, you know, but that might just also be the, the, the type of injury. Not everything has to be seen in 24 hours. But our trainer, Audrey, she does handle a lot of onsite things as far as making sure that kids are wrapped and prepared and, and that sort of thing. And now I will say, if there's, they're suspecting a concussion, I don't know that my first line of defense is to go to Commonwealth. I'm probably going to go to my pediatrician or depending on the severity, they're going to the hospital. And that's where kids are. But that, that ultimately is up, that's up to the parent. If they want to take their child to the pediatrician, they want to wait it out, they want to take them to the emergency room. So I, you know, unless, unless, I heard that specifically from Dr. Marr that that's what he's having his trainer say to the kids. I don't know that we can, we can speak to that, but we can certainly find out.
Thank you. That's all.
I've got a question, I guess, for the, for the veterans here. Are we satisfied? This is a renewal, right? Are we satisfied with the service we're getting from this outfit?
Yeah, I mean, we've had a relationship with Commonwealth for a, a number of years. They've been very attentive to our students. They are not the only orthopedic doctor in this area. There's, there's another one that parents can certainly take their students to. But we've had a really good experience with Commonwealth. And the services that they provide us have been at a, a very low cost for the last number of years. But because of needing to stay competitive with salaries of their people, that's what's prompting there to be the increased cost of services for this trainer because they, they work often very odd hours with different games and they're there the, the entire game. And, you know, sometimes they're short and sometimes, you know, with volleyball, we, you know, we've been pretty good. We were pretty good, so that was a pretty quick turnaround. You know, we were beating them in three, but then other games like a football game or a baseball game, it's, it's going to be longer. So that's what really is prompting the increased cost. If we didn't believe that Commonwealth was no longer meeting our needs, Mr. Legath would certainly be looking at, at other, another office to work with.
Thank you.
I, I guess my, my concern is, I mean, we're seeing the cost almost nearly double. And, and at least to me, I mean, it sounds like they're doing a great job with service, but to me, with that kind of cost increase, I feel like we should be, we should be looking elsewhere just to see that we're getting competitive rates. And I, and I, I think the term of the contract as well, that we're locking in for three years is also problematic at this higher rate. It, it doesn't really give us a chance to shop around until three years later.
I agree with Jason. I was going to bring up the same point. So with your comment, I'm assuming we haven't made any effort to look other where? Because what's the other places? No, St. Luke's? Don't we have a relationship with St. Luke's? Isn't it the conortion with the teachers?
We do have a relationship with St. Luke's for the insurance, for the school districts that are involved in the health trust. But that doesn't necessarily extend to the students. And St. Luke's are, a lot of them are closed facilities for people in the trust. And the other ones that aren't are urgent cares. And I believe the closest one might be in Cootstown, which we, and it's an urgent care. So, and their specialized physicians would be at their sites and we, there's none of them locally. So I don't see St. Luke's for the time being being an option for us.
I would, I would be interested in us doing more research, though.
I was against this at first, coming into the meeting. And I will tell you, I'm, I'm still not in favor. I think it, I'm not saying I'm not in favor, but I'm always weary when we look at three-year contracts because I think that a lot can change year to year. However, looking at this, they're giving us a full-time athletic trainer at 40 hours a week for 10 months for $30,000. And I understand that it doubled, and I was against that at first, but when I break that down to an hourly rate, even at the $30,000 as opposed to the 16, I'm more understanding as to what we're getting out of this contract. And so I think that Commonwealth has been a good partner of ours. I think that as a district, we probably need to work on better communication to our students on how they get needs that they need to get, but that's not the purpose of this specific contract. This contract is looking at the athletic trainer and the services they provide. And I think that we were getting an unbelievable deal prior three years. And we're probably, there's, we're probably still under market value at $30,000 for a full-time employee. To the point that if we couldn't find one or we got out of this and we had to hire one under our CBA contract, it would cost us a lot more money. And I think that that's a risk we take with someone that's been a great partner of ours for a long time.
Just to, to add what Mr. Morgan said, I, I agree with that. The, the price that we've been getting for the last number of years is, I, I'm not really quite sure how they were affording to pay for their person. I think they were doing it at a loss. Having someone in the CBA is at a significant cost to the district because you have their salary and then you also have benefits. Um, and Mr. Feig will tell you that, um, between the healthcare costs, um, as well as the contribution the district pays for the pension, this is, this is a fraction, a fraction of the price. Um, and.
This probably doesn't even cover benefits.
I doubt it, for family coverage. Um, and, um, if we would lose this opportunity with Commonwealth and have to seek something else, and they weren't available to support our needs, that would be at the detriment to our student athletes, because, um, we're starting summer, we're starting practice. Um, and I'm not sure that our own trainer could handle that. And I would strongly recommend to the school board to not add another athletic trainer to the CBA because of the, the cost. Um, so if you're not going to, you know, we've had this conversation before about services, you know, with speech therapists. And we have said, let's, let's not hire someone, because it's better, it's more cost-effective for us to do it, um, with the, with the contract, contracted services, um, and the people that we have on staff. And then because those contracted services became so high, then it was more efficient, um, and responsible, cost-effective wise, to bring somebody in. Um, this is, this is not that case. Um, this would be at a very, if we brought somebody else in, it would be at a very significant, very significant cost to the district. Um, this is the, the better way to go. And it gives us more flexibility, because it is a challenge when you have someone, like an athletic trainer on your CBA, because they're technically working the teacher's contract, but they're not a teacher, because athletic events happen after the student day. So why this was added in the first place, why a trainer was added in the CBA in the first place, I'm, I'm not quite sure why, because this is a case where you really should have been looking at, um, doing contracted services. Um, because of the cost, um, because of the need for flexibility, um, and not have it tied to your CBA.
Also, I did, um, talk to Mr. Legath today, and he said in his conversation with Commonwealth that they offer this at a loss to them. This does not cover their complete, um, cost of this.
I was good, oh, sorry. I was just going to add, um, I was looking, while everyone was talking, at our two, uh, nursing contracts that we have that also include some other medical services and things like that. And while they don't offer an athletic trainer, they do offer physical therapy services, and that's at a cost of $95 an hour. So I don't know if that gives anybody any perspective or not. I'm not sure what the qua, you know, the difference in qualifications is, but it's a reference point.
Right. And, and as I under, I do understand why we contract out. Um, I'm, I don't know why we're getting this today, instead of getting a little bit more notice, where we could have this discussion and not feel under the gun. Um, but if there are other facilities that do offer this, I would have liked to know what the other pricing was, so.
I, I could apologize for what I got today. I got it the day of the last board voting meeting, so we didn't have a cow this month. So it's, you know, it had to go to the next, whatever the voting meeting was, which was today.
Any other discussion? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
Okay, ayes have it, motion carries.
Can I just add one thing to our discussion here, not about the vote? But I, I wonder if it would be possible that the district can look at how we communicate with families regarding, um, what their rights are, if there's an injury on campus. It doesn't have to just be athletics, but all-encompassing. Uh, just so that, that's clear, that it's findable on our website. I'm maybe in, uh, what's the fitness thing that all the athletes fill out? I know it's daunting.
Is it Big Campus?
Planet High School, yeah. Uh, and I think that a lot of times people are just trying to get through that. Um, and may, maybe there's information buried in there, but I do think that, you know, parents have a right to know what their rights are with their students, as far as how they get reimbursed, what the policy is for that, where they can take their children for services. Um, I think it would, it would just be good to have that handy to show.
Uh, John Breton and myself, and we'll work with Mr. Legath to make sure that that's visible on our website.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Odom, everything, everything else good with the committee? No other report?
No other reports.
Okay, thank you. Exeter Community Education Foundation, this is Schaefer.
Thank you, Mr. Mal. ECEF would like to thank Mailshark for their $35,000 donation to the EITC program. The company led by Exeter alum Brian Johnson has remained a dedicated supporter of ECEF and Exeter schools, and we can't thank him and the company enough for their many contributions. Mailshark has also been a platinum sponsor for our golf outing for this past several years, including this year's event. We are beyond appreciative and grateful. Thank you. Thank you to the Women's Club of Exeter, who donated $3,498 to ECEF's Student Outreach Program. We were joined at our June meeting by Mrs. Sharon Syret and Ms. Gail de Blasi from the club to present their donation. Every dollar of this donation and all donations made to Student Outreach will be used for students who need a hand up. Thank you so much. We are busy preparing for our August 2nd, 2024 annual golf outing at Reading Country Club. We are appreciative of all the longtime golfers and sponsors who return year after year to join us for this fun. We look forward to reporting on the success of this event in the coming weeks. And that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. Uh, BCTC Joint Operating Committee and BCIU Board of Directors, Mr. Fidler.
No meetings this month. We'll pick up again in August.
Wow, okay. Thank you, Mr. Fidler. Uh, Legislative PSBA Liaison, Dr. Hearing.
Nothing to report.
I did have one, um, question on this, probably more towards Mr. Feig, um, and, and Mr. Morgan. So a House Bill, uh, 1032 recently passed the Senate. I know it's, uh, okay, and it's sitting on the governor's desk as of a few days ago, waiting to be signed. Um, so I guess the, I just question, is that something where that conversation with Train is going to come up again to the, the subcommittee for, for solar?
It will come up again, but I first want to get the bill to make sure everything's what we're looking at.
Okay, all right. That was my only question. Thank you.
And that was regarding solar.
Solar.
I have one more thing for Legislative. Uh, I wondered if maybe we could get an update from administration to the public about, uh, where Governor Shapiro is with our state budget, as I know that there was a lot of activity with that over the last week.
Okay, can I, uh, give it a short?
Yeah, I think we, we can give a short recap, but I think we are, the, the administration is planning on doing something for the August cow to demonstrate a little bit more detail.
Last board meeting before we adopted the budget, I upped my guesstimate of what the state would give to about 65%. With what the state gave, and they, they moved things around. But we got additional $6,780 more than I budgeted for. So it's lucky. Now, what concerns me is the majority of the adequacy and tax supplement, they did not put it against the basic education funding formula. Uh, they put it against the Ready to Learn Block Grant, which scares me, because that's an annual application we have to do in September. Uh, do we have to write up the, the additional $700,000? You know, that they're going to approve it, or is it just going to be automatically given? And by putting it against the Ready to Learn Block Grant, it doesn't go against the base of the, um, basic education, uh, formless. So it's not guaranteed or is a hold harmless for the next year? So i- is this going to be a one-time or not? Now, they did increase, um, special ed funding. They originally were going to do 50 million, they went to 100 million. That went against the special ed funding, so we did have an increase there. Um, and that increased the base for next year. So hopefully, there's a hold harmless there that they can't go below. But the, the, the way they put the additional funding for regular education, it's not against the basic education formula, which is no hold harmless. And so it's, I'm hoping it's a, not a once and done, but it could be a once and done. You know, but we came within what we budgeted. I told you before, I've been on the Legislative Committee for years. So I, I had a feeling there coming in. The only thing that shocked me is where they put that extra regular education funding. They didn't put it under the regular basic education fund, they put it under a block grant, which you have to apply for each year.
We'll have a breakdown of it at the August meeting as to where, where we are with the budget. Um, but what Brian basically was alluding to, that because of the way the budget was crafted this year, um, it's going to make the planning for the budget for next year even more challenging. Um, but we are already starting to work on that. So, but we'll have a update for you next month.
Okay, sounds good. Um, all right, I think we're ready to move on to Township Borough Liaison Report with Mr. Morgan.
Seeing as I'm the last thing on the agenda, I have a lot for you tonight. Um, a lot, a lot has happened, uh, at the township level since we last met. Uh, two things specifically I wanted to bring up to the board. I'm going to go backwards. The first one is, uh, what's known to the community as, uh, Happy Landings Park. Um, and that is that their lease is due to expire. It was a 25-year lease, that's due to expire February the 8th, 2025. And at the last, uh, Board of Supervisors voting meeting, they did choose to opt out of that. There was a certain amount of notice they had to give us. They will be adequate for the notice. For those of you that don't know, this is a, uh, this piece of property is kind of funny, wherein the fact that the school district owns it, the Exeter Township leases it, and it is patrolled by Central Burke's Police Department, and it's on the property of St. Lawrence Borough. So I don't know if everybody got all that, but we all have a little piece of the pie until, until February. So, uh, I'd like to just turn it over to Dr. Heller and, and Mr. Feig, just for some comments around how that lease needs to be ended. And if there's anything you guys would like me to, uh, communicate with the Board of Supervisors.
So we, we anticipated that the lease would be ending, um, as they had already started, per the agreement of the lease, to take down any structures that they placed on the property. So for those of you that are residents here or worked here for a number of years, you know that there were two pavilions on the property. Um, they were torn down. Um, prior to that, there was a playground, a wooden playground, um, that, that was torn down. Um, so essentially, what is remaining is, um, throughout the property, um, by, down by the creek, there's different, uh, exercises, exercise equipment. And there's also the structure that has bathrooms, as well as the basketball courts with lights. The, uh, the tennis courts belong to the district and are maintained by the district. So it is our expectation, uh, that the exercise equipment is removed. Um, it does need to be removed. Um, as St. Lawrence Borough, uh, had a discussion with Brian, it really probably should never have been placed where it was placed, because it's in a flood area. Um, and again, it's something that we would ma- need to maintain. And, uh, the bathrooms that are down there are constantly being vandalized. Uh, and, uh, that would be, if we kept them, we would obviously need to, uh, make sure that they're being secured and not vandalized, and then cleaned up and maintained. And that's just not something that the district can take on at this time. Uh, and then it leaves the last piece with the basketball courts, which is where Brian and I have had the, the most discussion. Uh, because, you know, obviously, this building overlooks the basketball courts, and we know that that's an area uh, where a number of our students come to play basketball after school, and of course, during the summer. It is our recommendation at this time to the board that we consider, uh, leaving the basketball courts in place, uh, for students in the community to use. Uh, knowing that, uh, if you choose to do that, then we are also responsible for maintaining the basketball courts. What we will recommend that the board have the township remove are the lights. Uh, because there are no other lights, uh, down in the community park, and it attracts people to come down there in the evening hours. And, um, we will be recommending to the board that we put up a gate, um, down at the bottom at the tennis courts. Uh, so no one can enter the park, um, uh, uh, in the evening hours. Um, because we know that there is, again, been a lot of vandalism. And, uh, it's somewhere that Central Bark, uh, Central Burke's is down quite frequently, because there's, there's things happening there that, that they shouldn't be happening. Um, so, uh, that, that will ultimately be our recommendation that everything go except for the basketball courts, and that you also have them to remove, remove the lights, and that we, that we add the gates.
How would you like that to be communicated? Is that something the district will reach out to the township manager? Would you like me to reach out via email to the Board of Supervisors?
I, I think by the terms of the lease, we first have to get official notification, then we'll communicate back to them. You know, just leave them a cat.
Yeah, so there should be written notification coming.
Parking, it's not really safe. The building itself, I just drove down there again. Uh, the roof would have to be replaced. Uh, I'm told that they've broken through the skylights to get into the bathrooms, but the roof has moss, and you can see the rotted, you know, it's a, structurally, I don't think it's worth keeping, or I don't want to have, I don't have the budget to fix it, okay?
So, once we receive that notification, again, my recommendation, um, is that we then bring that to the board, and then the board decide, um, if you would like us to pursue, again, having the exercise equipment removed, the bathroom structure taken down, um, the removal of the lights, maintaining the court. Um, and then, once you have a decision on that, I believe the best course of action, although, you know, Sharon might have it, might want to weigh in on this, is that we put that in writing to the supervisors.
And, and that would be sent then from administration to the township? Okay.
Just, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
The, the lease agreement kind of states in there that they have to bring it back to, that we have the right to ask them to bring it back to its original structure. Do we need to take board action on it if we have a straw poll, or do, Sharon, does it, do we need to have an actual vote for this?
I haven't read, I haven't seen the lease, um, to see how automatic that is. Um, it, it certainly will be helpful, because I can imagine that maybe we won't get as much help in removal of all of that stuff to our satisfaction. Um, and so having the board's acknowledgement of, you know, this is, this is the direction that the board wants. Is it required? Probably not. Would it be probably useful as we go down the pike? And to make sure we get as much cooperation as possible, it might be a good idea.
Is there any reason that we couldn't take board action on that tonight? Is, is, I mean, is that if we know what we want to do?
I feel like we haven't advertised forward on the agenda.
Yeah, and also, I'd like to look at the lease.
Okay, that's fine. I just want to make sure that we can keep the, I, I would just say that let's make sure that we have that set up for August, because I do think that there's not a large timeframe between now and the snow word, so, uh.
But I do think we have to get official notification.
Right, I was going to say, you need those triggering events.
Uh, it may, it may be worth, um, Mr. Morgan, reaching out to the supervisors to ensure that they are sending official notification in, in writing.
I can do that, yeah.
Thank you.
And then I just did have one final question. It did say within the lease agreement that they were covering the liability insurance. So is this something that, are we also covering liability insurance, or is this something that we're going to have to, uh, add to our policy?
Every bit of land we have, we have liability insurance. On this case, it's we're secondary, but there's, I'm sure, you know, the insurance company knows that both places have deep pockets, so they, they rate us based on having the full liability there. So, so it is covered, because it's our property, even though we lease it. You know, whoever, if you have an accident, they're going to sue both parties no matter what.
My, uh, a- a- my only comment on it would be, uh, i- if it's possible for us to reach out to, um, Central Burke's Police, um, and, and maybe just gather their opinion on any other security measures that we might need down there, as well as their opinion on removing the lights, because I, I don't know. I, everything I've always ever been taught is, once you take the lights out, you, you invite even worse behavior to happen. So I, that's the only, that's the only concern I would have there, is if we end up removing all the lights from that area down there.
Those lights are not on, though, unless the basketball carts are in use.
Okay.
And for the last two years I've been here, the basketball court lights were on, but there's no light in the parking lots. Which is, which causes a, a safety issue for, at least on my end.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so I, I mean, either way, though.
I think it's a good idea, though, to at least reach out and, and get a better understanding. Maybe the district or Eric can reach out to Central Burke's.
We'll, we'll have Eric Siedel, uh, reach out to Central. We'll have Eric Seidel reach out to Central Berks, and then in the meantime, we'll send Sharon a copy of the lease to review. And if we, oh, perfect. And if we have, and if we have the notification by the August meeting, we can, you know, make sure we have that on the board. If not, we'll wait till we have the notification.
Very good. Anybody else before I move on to the second thing? Okay. As you're all aware, the former Promenade Shopping Plaza, now owned by Exeter Township, has been for sale and RFP was completed with no bidders. The Township made the decision to solicit the help of the Berks County Redevelopment Authority, who feels that they can get a higher bid for the property. At the June 24th, 2024 meeting of the Exeter Board of Supervisors, a hearing and a vote following was made and passed to change Zoting Ordinance 871, specifically 23.h279, the change of the language of conditional use to buy right. This would specifically be for properties with 15 acres or more, affecting only four properties in the Township. These being the former Promenade Shopping Plaza, the Shellborne Square, Hillcrest Racquetball Club, and Reading Country Club. This would be specific to apartments, townhomes, related parking, and related structures to mix, for mixed-use development. So by doing this, my understanding is, and I'm not an expert at this, but my understanding was that they can now advertise this as mixed use or residential without the board saying that they can or not. They can do this on their own. This specifically right now is affecting the Promenade, because that's the property that's for sale. My specific concern with this is that the Board of Supervisors of the Township has not reached out to District Administration or the Board of Directors for a comment or to work together. My concern, of course, is that as we can, there's two concerns, right? And I'd like Dr. Heller to speak it as well, but as we increase our residence, our ability to have more residents come into the Township, there's a potential for us to increase our student population. And of course, my second concern is that as a district, we've spoken many times about the importance of bringing, you know, commercial, you know, commercial businesses into the Township. And this is a way that we could potentially be getting residential or mixed use. So I do think that, you know, our citizens in Exeter Township are paying taxes to the Township and to the school district. I think that one in some instances can affect another. I think this is the potential to be one of those instances, and I think that we have to establish some kind of a line of communication with the Township and the Board of Supervisors to at least let them know where we feel we agree or disagree, or what action that we would like to see from them in the future.
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Morgan. I think we've seen a number of things occur at the Township without soliciting input from the school district, which is troubling. There was the mobile home expansion that added on, I can't recall how many, how many units, maybe 90. There was the apartment building that was going through approval. That's 216 units, but near Home Depot, which could have been light industrial, but it ended up going the way with that current company of being an apartment complex. And now here we are talking about the Promenade, where it's now been open up to mixed use and residential. And I know I've said it for many years, that the problem that our residents have with high taxes and their concerns of the school taxes is they are bearing the brunt of the property tax. And we should be looking at commercial and industrial to come in and help supplement some of that. And I think it really has to be said that when you're adding more residential use, yes, we're getting projections such as the 216 apartment building had a rather low projection of, I think it was somewhere around 13, 18 students, but these are all projections. There is no guarantee that there isn't going to be 50, 60 students coming from that building. And the same goes for this. I was disheartened to hear somebody from the BCRA speaking in public comment at that last board meeting stating PDE projections, but yet no one had reached out to the school district to ask what our capacity was or what, any enrollment concerns that we had. It was, we were not brought into that conversation at all. So this is, these are the concerns I'm having. As the Township continues to look to add more residential, we could find ourselves in a bad situation. Maybe not next year or the year after, but many years in the future where a potential school building has to get built to accommodate all of this extra, extra building in construction.
Just to verify, Mr. Mel, to date, no one from the Township supervisors has reached out to central offices here to ask us any questions regarding our enrollment. I am concerned and disheartened that someone from an outside organization would speak on behalf of the school district when they too have had no conversation with the district and have no understanding of the way that our school district is trying to move forward with being financially responsible. Last year, we spent a great deal of time going over that budget with a fine tooth comb. And we eliminated a number of teaching positions because as we were adjusting to enrollment. And as you know, because you sit here week after week with us going over these numbers and all of our presentations are public, the majority of our budget is directly attributed to the number of staff who we employ and the benefits. That is, that's over 70% of the school district budget. That's really the main part of the budget at this point that we can control. And we have been doing, we have been very aggressive in trying to control those costs through eliminating positions through attrition. Without their cooperation and again, understanding of the limitations that we have regarding control over the budget, for them to just go ahead and arbitrarily make a decision and listen to someone else who does not have a true interest in the education of students and our community about what we can and cannot do is, should be of great concern to the members of this community. And I would encourage the supervisors to take the time to reach out to us so that they understand completely what the challenges are that we're facing with the limited budget that we have. Because we wanted to make sure that we kept our tax increase as low as we possibly could. But we won't be able to do that if we have an influx of students and we need to hire teachers to teach their students, as is their right as community members in this district. Nor will we be able to control the budget if we're placed in the situation where we actually have to build a new building. And we actually don't, we would have to look at the current land that we possess. And the recommendation back in 2016 from KCBA was actually to build a large school on Lorraine's site while keeping Lorraine operational and keeping that, and having that building being built. And that probably would ultimately be our recommendation. And so there's a lot of factors to consider. And so it would be really helpful if they would have that conversation with us, because we are the community. The school district is the hub of this community.
Thank you, Dr. Heller. And I also want to remind everybody that Mr. Mel had spoke about that apartment complex behind Home Depot. To my knowledge, I don't know that they've broken ground on it, but there are not residents in there yet, correct?
That's correct, yeah. I'm not aware of any construction that's taking place there yet.
So, I mean, and that hasn't even happened yet, so we can't judge the impact of that based on what, you know, because they did give projections of what they felt was going to be the impact to student population, or I shouldn't say student population, but number of minors in that development. But we can't assess that because it hasn't started. So welcome more discussion. My question to the board is, just like everybody's blessing to open the line of communication, send an email to the Board of Supervisors President and the interim Township Manager with Mr. Mel and Dr. Heller on copy, that we could, you know, either have the Township and the administration set up a meeting, or that we could open lines of communication and answer questions or give feedback that we see fit.
Would anybody have any objections to that? Okay, sounds like you're good to go.
That's all I have, Mr. Mel.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan.
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Fidler.
As liaison, do you meet periodically with a representative from the Township?
I do not. I think it would be within our rights as a board to ask me to do that. I don't, I wouldn't do it without, you know, consent of the board. You know, since I've been doing this since, whatever it was, December 12th.
Yeah.
There, you know, I closely follow it, you know, as well as I do the Borough St. Lawrence, just to, you know, to make sure I understand what's going on. It just so happens that these two initiatives happen two weeks from each other. So this will be our first opportunity to possibly do that. And then the other, only other time was when we originally brought the idea of solar backup. We did say that if it, if we decided to move to the next step with it, that we would bring that discussion to the Township level to see if there was a bigger need.
I mean, I've heard other organizations have periodic lunch meetings. You know, the representative and the board president meets one month, and then on the alternate months, Jason and Christie meets with the board president. I think it's, I'm getting the impression that they're not reaching out to us, so maybe we have to do more outreach.
Yeah, I 100% agree, and I think that we have to, you know, I don't know if they're, in my tenure, there's never been a relationship. I think that, you know, it's important that we have one, not just with Exeter Township, but with the Borough St. Lawrence as well. Just so that this way, when these things happen, you know, we get on top of it quicker.
Yeah, I mean, I know Eric Seidel meets with the police regularly, so I think we ought to do the same.
Yeah, I mean, I could just speak for my two years as liaison between the Borough and the Township. Really, the purpose of it, at least in my eyes, was communicating when there was something that needed to be communicated. Or, you know, I don't see an issue with having regular meetings, but as long as there's something, you know, a topic to discuss. But yeah, it's also made it challenging, I feel like even before our time, that there's been a significant amount of turnover on the Supervisors Board, as well as the manager position that's been there. So it makes it rather challenging to keep a solid relationship.
But to that point, this would be an excellent time then to take advantage of some degree of stability and reestablish some sort of regular communication. I remember when I was a reporter, there are reporters who don't go to City Hall every day, and then there are reporters like me who do go to City Hall every day. Even if there's nothing to report, then when something bad happens, like a shooting, if you show up as a stranger, you don't get in to cover the story, but if they know your face and they know you stop by once in a while, come on, we'll show you, we'll show you what's going on.
I have heard they know Mr. Morgan's face. It actually is pinned up down there, just as a warning, so.
And, Mr. Fidler, I applaud your suggestion, and I think that it's worthwhile. I think at a very minimum, and this is kind of a combination of what you and Mr. Mel said. I think when the hand changes of Township Liaison, we should initiate a meeting to, you know, do introductions. And I think that my, I think measuring, you know, understanding what's going on in the Township and the Borough at a distance is okay, as long as we have an established communication, and then we can meet as needed as things arise. I don't like having meetings just for the sake of having meetings if there's not an agenda to discuss. Not that I'm opposed to being cordial with people, just, you know, the concept of a meeting would be to have an agenda. So I think establishing communication, making sure the Board of Supervisors knows who the Township Liaison though is well put and should be done. Thanks.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, and you're good, Mr. Morgan?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, so next will be public comments for non-agenda items. No one has signed up, but would anyone like to come to the podium? All right, nobody. Are there any board members that would like to be heard at this time? Okay. Our next meeting will be our Committee of the Whole Meeting on Tuesday, August 6th at 6:00 PM. If there are no objections, we'll adjourn the meeting.